You know what? I'm in the mood to do a little physics. Let's do a little magnetic induction. One of the most awesome things we can talk about in physics, in my opinion. Alright, so we're gonna start out with some introductory things and then we'll, we'll kinda go deeper and deeper here. So, the reason why I think this stuff is so cool is because it is the intro to being able to understand how we make electricity generators and how we run electric motors. Okay, so it's kinda hard to see that with some of this stuff, but as you begin to work through it, especially when we get down to this stuff down here, you'll start to see how this relates to motors and all that. Okay, so let's start out with some definition. We need to know what flux are, and they are simply field lines. Alright, and you're already used to dealing with magnetic fields with diagrams like this over here. So we've had some experience with that in the first video. By the way, this is part two. So if you haven't watched part one, probably a good idea before you watch this one, because I'm gonna assume that you know a lot of things. A variable for flux is phi. Alright, so that symbol right there, and the unit is W B. Okay, and that stands for the Weber. Okay, so here's, here's how we like to think of that. Let's say, let's say we've got a big area here, and it's kinda divided up. Let's say this is one meter and this is one meter here. Okay, so enclosed in that meter by meter, I've got nine flux. Okay, so we could say that I have nine Webers per meter squared. And a Weber per meter squared is also a Tesla. So we would, we would, this field drawing that we have right here is nine Teslas. So we don't often write that, but that unit makes a lot of sense if you think about it. And here's why. It's kind of like field line density. So how tightly packed these Xs are together, wouldn't it make sense that that is a stronger field? Okay, so if I had double the Xs inside here, that would be an eighteen Tesla field. Okay, the density of the flux is greater. Okay, so that's what that means. And we can represent this with an equation. Our B field is equal to flux over area. Alright, now that is not what's on your equations page. Your equations page rearranges it for phi. So it says phi or flux. The amount of flux we have are equal to how strong the B field is and, or times the area we have. So if we have a bigger area, like this would be three by three, so nine meters squared, we're obviously gonna have more flux. Alright, so flux is B A, right? Um, pretty B A. Alright, so let's look at this page here. And you can see it's right there. Okay, now down here, they throw a cos theta at us. Okay, so again, just like we talked about with these, however your teacher taught it to you, or whatever makes sense to you, a dot means a dot product, okay? Just like a cross means a cross product. Cross product means sine between the two things. Dot product means cosine. So here, the cosine of the angle between the B field and the area matters. And I'll show you why. So these are the same. Um, that means there are three redundant equations right here. There aren't as many magnetism equations on here as it looks like. Okay, so let's, let's take a look at this. Let's say we have some area here. I'll do a circle this time. Doesn't always have to be a square. And let's say we have field lines coming up through that area. Okay? And then I'm also going to draw, whoops, I'm also gonna draw normal. So here's horizontal right here. This is the normal or the perpendicular to the surface. Alright, so the theta in the equation, I'm gonna add a cos theta here. This theta right here is the theta between the B field and normal. Okay, is not the theta between the B field and the area we have here. Alright, that's a common mistake is to, is to use this angle right here, which would be ninety. Okay, so what's the theta for my example here? That theta is zero and the cosine of zero is one. Okay, so it makes sense because the maximum amount of flux is going to be when the B field is oriented perpendicular to the area. Okay, now remember, okay, it is, the theta is between this and normal. So theta is zero. Alright, now if we start to do this with our field lines, we are going to get, and our fields oriented going across like that or something, we are going to get less field lines through the area. Okay, and when those field lines are perpendicular to the normal force, or not normal force, to the normal line, um, which would mean parallel to the area, we are going to get zero flux through the loop. Okay, because we'd be plugging in a cos ninety, which is zero, which will zero this whole thing out. Alright, so hopefully that makes field density a little bit clearer for you. Okay, let's go on and talk about Faraday's law and how we use this stuff. Okay, we are now going to connect this back to voltage. Alright, we use the symbol E M F. Alright, and we can use this here and this stuff over here to get voltage, and this is how all of our power is generated. Um, not power from a battery, but our alternating current that we use that's running my document camera and the screen and all of that. Delta flux, delta T. Super important. Okay, it's called Faraday's law. And it means that when we change the amount of flux through an area, um, as time goes by, that creates voltage. Okay, so all of these diagrams over here, you can think of this wire here as kind of like a lawnmower blade, and it is cutting through these field lines. Alright, now that's, it's not a perfect analogy. The field lines don't actually get chopped off and then fall off on the ground. Okay, they're still there, but as it cuts through those, as it mows through those field lines, you get voltage. Okay? So, um, we'll, we'll take a look at these in a second. Let's look at one more way to represent this equation. We hardly ever use it like this, okay? Because we're barely ever given a value for phi. Um, problems rarely say, oh, look, you have fifteen Webers and they're being cut in five seconds. Um, usually you'll be given an area and a B field. So we will take this equation, alright, and you don't have to put this on your paper, but we are going to sub it in right here for phi. And so we're gonna say the change in the B field and the area. Okay, and we actually put a parentheses over here. Over time, the area can be changing and the B field can be changing. Okay, and that will produce a voltage. So on your equations page, let's find it. Here they, um, they represent it like this. So you just need to remember that we will be plugging in B times A to this a bunch. Alright, we'll talk about this one next. Okay, and we'll also relate this to current and resistance, so this really connects back to circuits as well. Okay, we also have to tack this on, and this is not on your equations page. This is number of coils. Okay, so let's say we have something like this or something like this down here, and we have a bunch of coils, and they're all cutting field lines at the same time. It actually multiplies the voltage when we do that. So we have to know how many, how many coils we have. And again, not on your equations page, you have to know that if you're asked about that. Alright, okay, so let's do some examples here. We need to know by looking at these, it says, draw the direction in which the generated current wants to move. Um, in one of the examples, no E M F or voltage is created. Okay, so that would mean no field lines are being cut if no voltage is being created. Alright, so here's what we are going to do. We are going to use right hand rule for this. Alright, and your, people teach this differently. Okay, the acronym I use is M B C. Alright, so M B C. Okay, this is your thumb. Alright, and um, your thumb is movement. B, this is your pointer. Alright, and it is the B field. Direction and C stands for current. Okay, so you could also say M B I if you wanted to, and your current is your middle Okay, so it's just like the right hand rule before, alright, um, or Fleming's left if you know that one. They are all at right angles. Okay, so let's do this one together and then you guys can try these and, and tell me the direction of the current. Okay, so M B C, movement is down, B field is into the page, and then back this way, okay, that is current. Alright, so this is really hard to do under a document camera. There you go. Current would be in that direction. Okay, so try these and pause the video and tell me what direction the current is in. M B C, yes, I do sing. Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, uh, let's, let's take a look at all these. So here are movements that way, B field is into the page, and it says the current should be up towards the top of the page. Okay, but there's no wire in that direction. Alright, so here's what's happening. No field lines are being cut here. The answer is no current. Alright, no current will flow in this one. It's like taking the lawnmower blade. Here we were slicing grass. Okay, you wouldn't take a lawnmower blade and run it past the blades of grass like this, okay? You're not gonna get any current, no cut field lines. Alright, this one, movement is your thumb, it is down into the page, the B field is that way, and so your middle finger is pointing awkwardly in this direction. Okay, some of these require some interesting shoulder contortions to get right. Um, this one, if you did it, should have drawn an X. Okay, and that means that the current is going, um, away from us into the page. Okay, so some right hand rule practice there. Faraday's law stated differently. Okay, let's use this to come up with an equation that really gets us the same thing. Okay, so we are still getting voltage, so we are going to still be doing change in flux over time, but we're gonna write it differently. Alright, so let's say we've got, um, our blade here cutting grass. Okay, it's actually a wire crossing field lines. And let's say this is one meter. Okay, and it's going two meters per second, so here's another meter. So in one second, it is going to sweep out all of this. Okay, it's gonna cut all of those field lines. And it's gonna cut those in one second. So here, the important thing is the velocity. Alright, so if the velocity increases, we're gonna cut more field lines. The B field, if the B field increases, we're gonna cut more field lines. Okay, and then also the length of wire cutting field lines. So if L goes up, we're also cutting more field lines. So these three are, um, going to directly affect the E M F. So more B field, bigger wire, longer wire, and the velocity that wire is going. Okay, so, um, let's calculate the E M F for this. Let's say we've got four Webers per meter squared or four Teslas. And this is three meters long, and the velocity is two meters per second. So our E M F is gonna come out to twenty-four volts. Okay? Okay, so this stuff here, this is, this is power generation. We've got a conductor slicing through field lines. Now in reality, it's coils turning in a, in a magnetic field. You have this magnetic field and coils are turning and slicing these things, and it takes energy to turn those coils, so it takes energy to get energy. You don't get it for free. And, um, we get a voltage from that. Okay, so this, this tells us how we get our, get our electricity. Now here, this is, if we can understand this, we can begin to understand the basics of an electric motor, which is the opposite of this. So here, we have an existing B field and we're running current through a conductor. Okay, and that's gonna create a force. Here we're using a force. Here we are using current to create a force. How cool! So this is a motor. Now what I want you guys to do is to use your right hand rule, okay? Which is F I B. Alright? Or if you're my students, use Fleming's left. Okay, maybe some people know that one, and that is F B I. Yeah, we're in the F B I. Okay, so use those for each segment and tell the direction of the force. Okay? So the direction of the force on each segment. Why don't you pause and do that? Okay, now this is kinda tricky. Um, the answer to this one, all of the forces will be directed outward for this orientation. Okay, so this, this coil is gonna wanna kind of explode out. Not very useful. This one, all of the forces are directed inward. Also not very useful. Okay, just kinda, all these forces are wanting to squash, squash this thing. Okay, now here, we start to get some practical use out of this. The current and the B field are parallel for these. Okay? No force. No force. And we learned that in the last video. For these wires, we are gonna get a force. Okay, so, um, F B I. Okay, so for this one, the force is into the page, and here, the force is coming at us. So this thing is going to wanna spin. This is hard to do two dimensionally. Okay, so this thing's gonna wanna spin in this direction. Alright, so it's gonna wanna, if I have a line through here, it's gonna wanna spin around like that into the page. Okay, and this one's simply gonna wanna spin in this direction. Okay? So that's, that's how we get our electric motors, and that's on the same axis here. Alright, so that's just using your hand rule to figure out the direction of the force on wires. Alright, the only difference here is you're doing it four times instead of just once, like in the last video. Alright? Cool, let's move on to the other side. Here's Lenz's law, last piece of notes before we practice. Um, the textbook definition of Lenz's law is the most heinous, hideous, most confusing thi-- I don't even underst-- it's, it's terrible. Okay, so here's the remix. No such thing as a free lunch. Alright, I learned that from a very smart Englishman. Um, okay, so what the heck does that mean? It means that when we are trying to cut field lines, trying to change how many field lines are through a conductor, we will get resistance. Alright, and the resistance comes from the field that the current creates. Okay? So here's the deal. Let's look at part C first. We are going to pull this coil to the right out of the magnetic field. And we learned on the other side that when we change the amount of flux through the loop, okay, this thing, um, delta phi, delta T, when we change how many of these are through here in a certain amount of time, we get E M F. Alright, and when we get E M F, we're gonna get current running around in here. Okay, so again, this is power generation. Alright? So we are going to take this loop and we're going to yank it out of the field. Alright, so the amount of field lines going through here, the amount of dots going through here is decreasing. So what happens is the current in here will try and put field lines back into the loop. Okay, it is the resistance, so it is resisting change. Okay, now this is tricky. You have to use your right hand wire grabber rule, okay, to solve this. So if you picture this loop here and you are grabbing it in such a way that you are putting dots back in, so you want your fingertips pointing up. So if I grab it like this, I'm putting Xs inside there. I don't wanna do that. I'm going to grab through the loop and put dots in here. Okay, so I like to picture my four fingertips coming through this loop, and then my thumb is the direction of the current. Okay, so four fingers, thumb is the current, you're, you really have to think three dimensionally on this. Um, we just put dots back in there. Okay, so current is going to be going counterclockwise in this example. Alright? Okay, let's look at this one. We've got a, we've got a shrinking coil. Okay, so the area is getting smaller. So remember, we can do this. Delta B A over delta T also gets us an E M F. So here, the area is getting smaller. Okay? Even though the area is getting smaller, we're getting E M F from that. And the reason why is because as this area gets smaller, what does it do? The wire crosses through field. Okay? So what's happening is we are losing Xs. So if you use your right hand rule, what do we wanna do? We wanna put Xs back inside the loop. So grab it in such a way that your, your fingers are pointing down through the loop. Okay, so here are your four fingertips. Okay, grabbing through the loop and then your thumb is in the direction of the current going around like that. Alright? And I think that's a really good way to visualize it. So, and I could've drawn it on this one, I guess, too. That would work. So here, current is clockwise. Okay, now these, I'm actually not gonna do those ones. Um, I'm just gonna let you guys get on with the multiple choice here. So there are four questions. Pause the, pause the video and work on those problems. Alright, these are some great multiple choice. Hopefully you thought through them, um, really well before we go over them here. This one, basically, there's all these different ways we can cut through field lines. Changing the magnetic, um, the magnitude of the magnetic field. Okay, that's gonna increase the number of field lines inside here. So that is not an answer. Okay, we wanna find the one that will not cause current. Increasing the diameter of the circle, as it expands, it's gonna cut field lines, so no. Rotating the spring about a diameter. Here's a diameter. If we rotate, we're gonna chop field lines, so no. Moving the spring parallel to the magnetic field. So if we take it from the top and pull it out, okay, or push it into the page, we will not cut field lines. Okay, so that's the answer. Um, this one, taking the spring out of the field way out here, where as we slide it across, we are gonna cut field lines. Alright? This is Lenz's law. Okay, it's basically the same as this one. So the field is decreasing with time. That means we are losing dots. Alright? And the current is gonna try and put dots back in there. There is no such thing as a free lunch. Okay? And by the way, the current putting those dots back in there, that is, that is gonna cause a force that works against us when we're trying to create power. So here's your fingertips putting field lines back in, and then here's your thumb. So it is a counterclockwise direction. It's A. Okay, this one here. Um, I like this one because it makes us go back and think about Ohm's law. Current is voltage over resistance. Okay, so as we pull this thing out, we are cutting field lines. We are going to create a voltage, and that voltage is B L V. Okay, so we've got a B field, we've got a length of wire right here that is slicing field lines, and it's got a velocity. And then whatever resistance we have, that goes on the bottom. So remember, we can, we can use Ohm's law, alright, for our E M F. Okay, and put the E M F on the top of the fraction. So the answer is, oh, we have to talk about the direction. So it's gonna be, we can eliminate these, it's gonna be C or D. Is it clockwise or counterclockwise? Okay, well, you have to use M B C to do it. So movement, B field, current. Alright, so the movement is to the right, the B field is into the page, so the current is going to be up. Alright, M B C or M B I. And so that means we're gonna get a counterclockwise, um, counterclockwise current flow. So the answer is, or sorry, we are gonna get a clockwise current flow. Answer is C. C clockwise, not counterclockwise. Alright, let's look at this one, last one. Um, we want the total magnetic flux through the, through the loop here, and we just have to remember flux, flux is B A. So B A. Okay, so the B field is going to be two, and our area is point oh five times point And our area is point oh five times point oh eight. And if you multiply that out, you get point zero zero eight. So that would be C. Alright, and we are going to get Webers. Okay, let's move on to the next part. Okay, pause and work this whole page. This problem's probably the most important of any multiple choice. Okay, you've worked through them. And like I said, this is probably the most important. I saw this on, uh, on the AP test examples, probably three or four times, things just like this. Okay, where they have a wire here and then something close to the wire that's gonna be affected by what's going on here. So because this wire's got a current, it's creating a field. And we use the right hand rule to figure out what that field's doing. So the right hand wire grabber, put your thumb in the direction of the current. Alright, and you are going to get X's on this side. So there's a magnetic field going through these loops. And these loops are moving around, okay? So since they're moving around, they, we have the potential to be changing the flux inside the loops. Okay, and if that's happened, we can then use right hand M B C. Alright, to figure out the direction of the current. Okay, so let's look at loop one first and then see if we can eliminate some answers. So the, so the sides of the wire cutting field lines. Okay, let's look at this bottom one. If you do the right hand rule, you will get a current going in this direction. Alright, so you are going to get a clockwise current. So that eliminates all of these. Okay, check it with the right hand rule. Loop two, um, this is tricky and an important detail that we actually haven't gone over yet in the video. So this one, yes, it is slicing through the field lines, but there's no change in how many field lines are going through the loop. Okay, since it's not moving to a place where the field is less, this one's moving to a place where the field is weaker out here. Okay, um, and we learned that in the first video because the R is increasing. This is staying in the same fill- field density. So what you end up getting is no current, so the answer is C. Alright, good question, lots of stuff for us to look at in there. Okay, these two, um, I'm just gonna give you the answers. This is A, okay, the answer to this one is A. Alright, and we will move on to this page here. Okay, so pause the video and do this entire page and then I will give you the answers. Okay, so Alicia, Banji and Colin, they're all going to the movies, right? And Alicia's like, hey, Banji, Colin, let's talk about wire loops going through fields, let's do it. So they start talking about rate of change and all that, and it turns out Banji is right. Okay, so as this thing goes into the field, the rate of change is going to be constant. Okay, the rate of change of magnetic flux will be constant since it's moving at a constant speed, that's right. Okay, now Alicia, she said that the rate of the change is gonna increase because we're gonna get, as this thing passes this line, we're gonna get more and more X's inside there. Okay, now she's right, we are gonna get more X's inside there, but the rate of change is not gonna be the same. So flux, here's what Alicia's probably thinking. B A, okay, so as more area, as more area of this is within the field, you're gonna get more flux in there. Okay, but she's not taking into account the time thing. So if we're gonna talk about E M, E M F and all that, alright? Here's where we talk about rates, okay, and Banji's correct. Alright, Colin, he has no idea, wait, just don't listen to Colin. Okay, let's go down to this one. This is a great problem, love this problem. The answer is C A F or together, then D and then B E. Okay, how strongly they are repelled by the approaching magnet? Okay, so as this magnet approaches the loop, what's gonna happen is you're gonna get a change in how many flux are through the loop. And that's gonna create an induced current. Okay, now the more current we get running around the loop, the more repulsion we get. And that's Lenz's law, there's no such thing as a free lunch. So this is how power is generated. If, if we are taking this magnet and forcing it through the loop, the loop's going to resist us doing that. Okay, and there's gonna be a force in the other direction. So you can't make, you can't make energy for free, you have to use a force. Um, okay, so then we get to the ranking. C is gonna be the greatest because it's moving at a, the fastest speed. So that change of flux through the loop is gonna be greater. Alright, A and F are next because they're both moving at four. Notice the um, north-south thing doesn't matter. Okay, that's just gonna be the direction of the field lines, but the number through the loop is going to, is not gonna be affected by um, the polarity of the magnet. And then D is gonna be our second to last, it's moving slower. Okay, so the change is happening slower. And then these two, no induced current. Okay, and that's because there's that brake, so you're not gonna get any current. Um, here is, if you wanna pause it and read through this reasoning, okay? Very well said, um, that might help you uh, take a look at it a little further. So pause it if you want. Okay, we're gonna do the last page, but um, your brain may be a little fried, so I'm gonna give you a treat. Okay, it's time for Name That Nineties Song. You might know this one, okay, you need to give me the artist and the song. Let's take it back to the nineties. Yeah? Okay. Let's move on to the very last page. Okay, again, pause it and try this page out. Okay, let's go through this one. This is a pretty easy one. Um, very important problem, this is a cause and effect thing. And all of these little puzzles that I'm giving you are the types of thinking that will be on your exam. The students arguing one, the ranking task, this one, cause-effect. If we change this, what's gonna happen to that? Um, we need to be able to think in these three ways to do well on the physics two test. Alright, and they're challenging. Okay, so let's, let's go through each one here. Um, so we're gonna change these things. Okay, and you have to select here what it's going to actually do to um, to the E M F. Okay, how's it gonna affect the E M F if we do these things? Okay, so let's say we double the field strength. The answer's A, the E M F's gonna increase. Okay, and that's because of Faraday's law. Alright, more flux through the loop, more field lines to cut. Velocity is reduced, that's B, that's gonna decrease. Okay, we're not changing flux as quickly. The width of the loop is tripled. Okay, so if we triple this side, that side's not actually cutting field lines. So we don't really care about that side. Um, the answer's F, no change. Direction of the, um, of the field is reversed. Okay, so instead of dots, we have X's. The answer is C, it's just gonna change the direction the current goes. Alright, and you could use your right hand M B C to prove that. Alright, with this wire right here. The height H of the loop is cut in half down to this. Okay, not mowing as many pieces of grass anymore. Alright, so that is going to be B, decrease, E M F. Okay, and then they got crazy on us in six. The direction is reversed and the magnitude of the magnetic field is reduced. Answer's E. Okay, so the polarity is gonna switch and it's gonna decrease because we decreased the field. Alright, okay, so that's the end of the main event here. There is a bonus problem after this that you can try out and your teacher has the key to show you the answers. You know, let's not call it a bonus problem, let's call it an after-party. Alright, so who's going, who's going to the after-party? There's an awesome problem there, there's gonna be physics there, there might be calculators there, it's gonna be cool. Okay, I'll give you a preview so that you wanna show up. Look at this. Oh my gosh, you've got a cart with a wire loop that's about to enter magnetic field. This is gonna be awesome. Alright, hope to see you there.